I want to call to order the council meeting of August 8, 2016. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Here.
Peg Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kaymine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolf?
Scott Larmour?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Lieutenant Bloom?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting. There was one small correction that was circulated to all council members today. Are there any other additions, corrections, deletions? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. We'll now move on to the finance report for June 2016.
Including your council packet is the June UAN report, and some of the highlights from that report include the earnings tax collections for the month of June total $244,000. This is up about 95 percent from June of 2015's collection of $125,000. So the total amount received year-to-date is $2.4 million for the earnings tax. The estimate for 2016 is $2.6 million, $2,650,000. So we had some discussion at this during the Finance Committee in regards to what is driving that. Obviously, we had a large collection in January, but in addition to that, there have been some collections that may be as a result of changes in reporting time. So monthly and semi-monthly payments are now being received instead of quarterly. That was due to a recent enactment of a law. But the earnings tax continues to be our primary earnings source for the Village, and what is provided in the packet is, it shows you the 10-year history of the earnings tax collections, but collections are going extremely well for 2016. The property tax collection for the month of June was $500, over $506,000. That would be the Village's allocation for real estate property tax for the first half of the year. Then the Village also received a little over $73,000 from the state of Ohio, and this is referred to as a property tax rollback. That actually comes from the state of Ohio that is related to property tax. The Village received a local government fund in the amount of a little over $5,000 during the month, and that brought our total revenues for the month to $895,000. So overall, for finances, the Village has collected $3.4 million, and that is an estimate of $4.4 million. So year-to-date, we've collected 77 percent of what we had estimated for the year. On the expense side of it, expenses for this past month, $303,000 compared to our revenue of $985,000, which reflects the property tax primarily. But for the 2016 budget, we had a $4.3 million budget, and year-to-date, we've spent a little over $2 million, which represents about 46 percent of our budget. And that leaves us at the end of June with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.2 million. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager?
In terms of the amount of revenue collected, it seems to be on the quite high side at the date. Any thoughts of why that might be? I know, you know, I know you've shared that we should not look at a single month in time.
Correct.
Right, and I'm very well at that, but still, over the last few months, we're still, I believe, we're still running considerably ahead.
We are still running high, although the month of May was down, and so it is very cyclical in terms of what occurs, but it is, it is a pattern that you cannot detect by looking at it in a, on a monthly basis, and that's why we typically compare it to year to year. What I would anticipate is that we will meet our estimate for this year. No doubt, we will meet our estimate, and that'll be exceeded, but the one thing to keep in mind is the payments that we received in January actually probably would, could have been booked in the December of 2015. Recall that we came up short in 2015, so account for a lot of that as a timing issue. But in terms of how it happens, the timing on quarterly payments versus some of the other payments, the, whether it's semi-monthly, when those deadlines change, things happen, and you have to sort of wait for that year to progress. It may be a couple of years before we sort that out to see what the effect is of changing deadlines for when folks file. But it also is an indication that things are going well from an earnings tax standpoint.
Do you know if the employment situation has changed in the Village at all from some of our, you know, commercial?
For the month of June, it's not changed significantly, but we will start seeing changes as we go into the, into the fall quarter.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager? If not, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and Annie Cummins, who is our local representative for Congressman Wentrop, and Annie has been here before, and welcome back.
Thank you.
We'll give you a few minutes to go ahead and update us.
Great. Thank you guys for having me. Name change, it was Annie Wilkerson. I was married a couple of months ago, so now it's Cummins. I'll leave some of my new business cards on the back table, but my old email still works, so. Just kind of wanted to, I guess, come by for a refresher of the services that our office provides for constituents on a local level. A lot of people don't realize the services that the federal government can provide as far as being a liaison to federal agencies. So if you're having trouble with the IRS, social security, veterans issues, anything that, like that, you're trying to get a response, I know the IRS is tricky to get in touch with. A lot of times, we can help facilitate a conversation. So anything that seems kind of you're at your last straw, and you can't figure out where to go, you can contact our office. If we can't help, we'll point you in the right direction. Another thing that we do in the district office is we do the Service Academy nominations, which is, that process is starting, so if you know of any young people who are bright and interested in serving in the military and getting a great college education, send them my way, and I'll help them through that process as well. As far as legislative concerns, those go to the DC office, but we can handle them and pass the concerns along, so feel free to send that our way as well. One thing I did wanted to, want to mention is this Thursday on the 11th, at 8:30 a.m., we are having a coffee with your congressman in Norwood at the Bluebird Restaurant, and I'll leave some of the flyers on the back table back there. So if any of you or your constituents want to come by and chat with him, he just kind of goes table to table and talks to folks, and just kind of listens to what's on everybody's mind, so. Just wanted to refresh and give you guys a face and a name to contact if you need us, so, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Nicole, we do have on the website the contact details for the congressman's local office, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to committee reports, and first, the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Streets Committee, Streets Public Utilities Sewers Committee met twice in the last month, on July 25th, and again on August 3rd. The first time we're going to talk, the first item I'll talk about is the 2016 stormwater projects. There were several projects that were recommended and that had gone through the stormwater committee, including 2016 Street Rehabilitation Project, which is meant to fund storm, the stormwater portion of the Streets program, and this includes catch basin repairs, pipe replacements, curb and gutter repairs and replacement. That amount, that amounted to approximately $155,000. Now, actually, actually, may preface things that the total stormwater charges for the 2016 program will be approximately $396,000. And this is more than last year, in part because many of the projects were pushed off from 2015 into, into this year. Okay, so now, just moving down the list of stormwater projects, next was a project on, at 3305 La Mark Drive, which was to clean and install a reinforced concrete liner in the, in the 42, 42-foot concrete pipe to seal cracks and separated joints. This project was approved a few months ago, and was awarded, was approved by council and was awarded to Municipal and Contract Sealing Products. The work began on May 31st, was completed June 3rd. Next project was, is it Section Road in Farm Acres Drive, cost being about $28,000. And this was to replace approximately 50 feet of deteriorated corrugated pipe and install a plastic pipe, install a drop manhole, and a new headwell on the north side of Section Road. I believe we also covered this at the, at the last council meeting. The Village received, the Village received a $60,000 stormwater grant from the Hamilton County Stormwater District for this project. However, because the money is more than the actual cost of the project, the cost being about $28,000, we can't keep that difference, but have to return it to the Hamilton County Stormwater District. Two quotes were received in May, with the lowest and best submitted by Smith Construction for about $28,000, and I believe we approved this at the last council meeting. The next project is at 3361, 3381 Galbraith Road, and that was to replace approximately 233 feet of deteriorated concrete pipe with plastic pipe, and that cost was about $35,000. The next item was to continue the televising of the stormwater pipe system through the Village, and this is round three of four, something we started two years ago. The cost of that is $25,000. Next item is catch basin repairs, this, which is in part, which is part done by our maintenance crew, and depending on the severity, contract out, and the anticipated, the estimated cost is $40,000 for the repairs. In addition, for the actual project repairs, we also have fees that we pay into various, well, various organizations. First one is we pay a $20,000 annual fee to the Hamilton County Stormwater Fund, and then we, part of the stormwater project includes charges from our maintenance department, which typically comes out to about $50,000. So that adds up to about $396,000. Now, included in the 2016 Street Rehabilitation Program is asphalt base repair and paving of King Cave Road, and I believe the, the committee went through this about two months ago. I believe, again, we reported this out about a month ago, I think perhaps at the last council meeting, or, or May's council meeting. The Village had applied for and was granted funds for this project from the Municipal Road Fund, and that was through the Hamilton County Engineers' Office. Money in this fund is generated from the sale of license plates. The Village can apply for funds pending the review and ranking of the project by the Engineers' Office. The Municipal Road Fund, funding is in the amount of $95,000, and it's specifically earmarked for the King Cave, King Cave Road project. The actual cost is going to be about $101,000, $102,000, but nonetheless, most of that money is going to be coming from the Municipal Road Fund. So on the docket is Resolution 2016-29, which basically asks the council to approve, to enter into an agreement with the Hamilton County Commissioners to, to access these Municipal Road Fund project, project monies in the tune of $95,000.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-29, which authorizes an agreement between the Village of Amberly and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners related to the, the street paving project on King Cave. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-29. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item has to do with the acquisition of rock salt for our winter snow road program. At our committee meeting, Mr. Brown reviewed the current program, Wes Brown reviewed the current program, and so for the last, let's see, for the last several years, actually since 2010, to increase our purchasing power, we've been working with the city of Cincinnati to purchase rock salt on their contract. And this way, we basically leverage the kind of volume that they can purchase. We also have some advantages in terms of when we can accept delivery and things like that. Our past contract, that is last year's contract, was for 1,400 tons of rock salt with an 80% guaranteed purchase, or about 1,120 tons. The salt is used with our salt spitters and also part of our brine beet juice pretreatment of streets. Last winter, if you recall, was a particularly mild winter, so we didn't use as much salt as we anticipated, and didn't use as much salt as we had contracted for. And so, in fact, we fell about 400 tons short of the guaranteed minimum that we had purchased and obligated to purchase. Cincinnati was able to, now, obviously, we're not the only municipality that had this, had this situation. Cincinnati also had a similar situation. Cincinnati was able to negotiate a contract extension with Compass Minerals, which is the vendor that we receive salt from, that has several attractive features. First, we can purchase the price of salt at the same price as last year, and I think most importantly is that Compass Minerals will allow the Village to roll over last season's purchase shortage into this year's contract. Okay, so whatever we didn't spend last year will now be applied to this coming year, and so we will not have spent money that will go to waste, essentially. The contract also guarantees the Village will purchase 1,400 tons, of which 1,120 tons will be guaranteed, just like last year's contract. I think Peg me, Ms. Conway may be talking about this later, but with the anticipated construction of the new salt storage facility at the north site, we anticipate that we'll have ample storage space for the salt. The cost of 1,400 tons at $75.86 per tonne is $106,205, with a guarantee of 80% salt receipt being $84,963.20, to be precise. So before you is Resolution 2016-30, which is authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract extension with the city of Cincinnati for purchasing salt for snow and ice control purposes.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-30, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract, contract extension with respect to our salt needs for 2016, 2017. Are there any questions or comments?
With my understanding, for, sorry, if I'm lost, 2016 or 2017, budget for salt will be about half what the 2016 budget is. Is that basically correct?
Yeah, we do have remaining dollars that are encumbered for 2016, so those dollars will be applied to purchasing salt for this upcoming season.
So 2017 will be a less expensive year for salt is concerned.
Right. Well, unless we have, you know, excessive.
Unless we have, unless we have excessive stuff. Okay.
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, because this is my employer on the other side of this contract. It's.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-30, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract for salt for 2016, 17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, it, it passes unanimously with one abstention because of a potential conflict.
Next item is the, is awarding a contract for stormwater catch basin repair. What I just mentioned a few months ago, is part of the stormwater projects includes catch basin repairs, and these fall into two, kind of, I guess, I could call two categories. One category is in which our Village Maintenance Staff identifies catch basins that they can repair and that we pay for out of our maintenance budget. And in addition, the Maintenance Staff identified 16 deteriorated catch basins that required major repair that they could not handle. Mr. Chesney of the Maintenance Staff contacted two local contractors to seek a quote, one quote, and received one quote from Atlanta Construction for $35,328 for these 16 deteriorated catch basins. And so before you is Resolution 2016-31, Resolution authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract with Atlanta Construction to perform repairs on catch basins as part of the stormwater system.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-31, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract with Atlanta Construction to perform repairs on the catch basins as part of our stormwater program this year. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-31. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, it passes unanimously.
Okay, I think this is the last item from the committee. Actually, we discussed this over our last two committee meetings, and that had, and that was natural gas aggregation. Village Manager, Mr. Larmour, and our Village Energy Consultant, Mr. Don Marshall, was at our last, Mr. Don Marshall was at our last Streets Committee meeting, and reviewed the Village's energy aggregation program. The current natural gas program is set to expire in October 2016. To give some background, starting in the end of 2011, the Village initiated an energy aggregation program for electricity, and in 2013, for natural gas. Together with other municipalities, including the city of Springdale, Village of Cleves, Village of Glendale, we sought to achieve better pricing and value for the Village residents. The contract for electricity is typically three years, whereas the contract for natural gas can be up to two years. The length of the contract is determined by the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. During this time, Village customers, and over the last several years, number of customers in our aggregation program has ranged from about 800 to 1,000, have collectively saved about $1 million in electricity costs. Our first contract for natural gas, which was in 2013, which is a two-year contract, generated a modest collective savings of about $65,000. When we entered into our last natural gas agreement two years ago, a fixed cost agreement was more attractive than a variable floating cost, and was recommended to council, which we approved. Due to the collapse in gas prices, particularly in this calendar year, we haven't seen the savings relative to what we had if we had selected a floating variable rate. So for example, this calendar year, we'll see a loss of $90,000 relative to a floating variable rate. At the committee meeting of July 25th, we discussed whether we wanted to continue into a natural gas aggregation agreement, and we felt that residents had come to expect the Village to kind of identify what was best for them, and plus, we thought that Village residents might not want to be harassed by energy companies, you know, that, you know, we still, I mean, we still get harassed, but it would probably be worse if we had to do it on our own. And so we thought we would continue with the natural gas aggregation program with the understanding if someone wants to opt out of it, they can still do so. So, let's see. So, as I said, we felt that residents might prefer the simplicity of a Village aggregation program with the understanding that they could opt out at any time or not enter into this next two-year program. Mr. Marshall sent out a request for proposal to seven different natural gas suppliers and received four replies. His recommendation was to engage in a floating variable rate, and the best offer was made by IGS Energy, which is our current gas supplier. At any time during this agreement, the Village will have a right, will have a right to opt into a fixed rate. Mr. Marshall shared a document comparing the variable rate cost for natural gas for aggregation versus Duke Energy over the last year, and so for 10 of the last 12 months, the aggregator rate was actually less than the Duke Energy rate. Now, mind you, the difference, even in those two months where the aggregator rate wasn't the cheapest, the difference was really quite marginal. Since the Village currently has a master service agreement with IGS, and IGS has agreed to continue service under the terms of the existing contract, the Village would need to create an amendment to continue the contract. Residents won't need to do anything to continue, but will receive notification if they wish to opt out. If council approves this agreement with waiving of three readings, that is waiving the three readings and setting this up as an emergency decree, there should be no break in service. That is, once this contract expires in October, if we act now, there basically should be a seamless transition. So, before, before you is, is Ordinance 2016-12, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract with a natural gas aggregator for a specific time period and to declare an emergency. So what we have here, the process will be the following. First, we'll need a motion to approve the ordinance, oh, to, oh, sorry, first, we'll need a motion to waive the three readings of the ordinance. This is Ordinance 2016-12. Next, we'll need a motion to pass the ordinance, and third, we'll need a motion that this is an emergency that requires immediate execution. So, okay, so I make a motion, again, authorizing the, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract with a natural gas aggregator for a specific, oh, make a motion to waive the three readings for Ordinance Number 2016-12.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2016-12, as explained by Councilman Warren, that timing is, is required that the Village Manager enter into this by mid-September to ensure that we have continuity of service. So are there any questions or comments? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings, readings on Ordinance 2016-12. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes. Next is a motion to pass the ordinance, 2016-12, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a contract with a national, national, natural gas aggregator for a specific time period and to declare, for a specific time period.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2016-12, authorizing the Village Manager to enter into the contract for natural gas aggregation. Are there any questions or comments on that? If not, please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes. Third. This ordinance is necessary for the immediate, since this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare, and must be effective immediately so that the Village can enter into a contract with IGS Energy as soon as possible, so that can secure the rate set forth in the ordinance, and due to the variability in the national gas market, and that the Village can proceed with the aggregation program approved by council and the residents, that we declare this to be an emergency ordinance.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we declare Ordinance 2016-12 as an, as an emergency measure, which will allow the ordinance to go into effect immediately. Are there any questions or comments on that? If not, please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes. No more business from the Streets Committee.
We'll now move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Thank you. The committee met on August 1st, and was the second time the matter of a new salt storage building was before us. Staff has been researching this matter now for several years. Staff has been researching this matter now for several years. The current building has a capacity of 400 tons, and when salt is in short supply, they would like to, they were motivated to research options for a larger building so that it would have more storage capacity to even things out. And then in 2014, it was discovered that the building itself is having some serious deterioration, some structural issues, and so that heightened the need to continue this process. They first researched some repair options that were very expensive, ranging from $140,000 to $275,000, and so clearly, replacement was probably in order, and those options were not much better, $176,000 to over $300,000. And the village manager just really didn't want to pay that much money, so he put some money in the budget and told them to keep looking. And then through some professional contacts at the Public Works Conference out in Idaho, I think, or Iowa, someplace, anyway, they were with their colleagues, and they were seeing this particular type of building that's a galvanized frame with a fabric cover. And locally, the city of Montgomery also has this type of building, and so they did some other research, talked to some other communities, and discovered that this is, this is a new thing that is, is doing well for other communities. So, the company that makes this building is called Bright Span, and the new building will be 52 by 48, and it will have a capacity to store 1,000 tons of salt. The warranty on the Bright Span structure is 100 years on the galvanized framing and 16 years on the fabric. So, to actually do the work requires several different vendors. The estimate for the demolition phase is from Evans Landscaping here locally, and it's $7,805. The footers and walls will be done by Central Concrete Company of Ohio at $75,625, and then the structure from Bright Span is $38,750,000, bringing the total to $122,180. $200,000 had been appropriated in the 2016 capital budget for this project, and then there was some engineering costs in addition, so it's, it's well under the original estimates. The committee is recommending this, so I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 2016-32 to approve the construction of a replacement salt storage facility as outlined, and it would, the work would be done this fall in time for the season, the winter season. So moved.
Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-32, which approves the construction of the replacement salt storage facility. Are there any questions or comments?
In addition to the contract price, there is some other work which is going to be done. This is going to be part of the roads contract, which will be done in a later time. I think it's just some blacktop surfacing in the parking lot area for the salt, is that correct?
That is correct. There was an additional, additional bids were obtained as an add-on from Evans, I believe it was, was it, anyway, and the engineer recommended that that repair of the asphalt around the building, in front of the building, be done as part of a later roads project. It would be more cost-effective than spending on that now.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment and kind of echo some of the things that Councilman Conway shared, and it's really, hats off to the maintenance crew for really digging into this and coming up with a very cost-effective solution for, for a real problem we had. The difference in cost savings to the villages was, is considerable, as well as the longevity of this, you know, of, of the new structure.
Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-32 to approve the construction of the replacement salt storage facility. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item that we discussed in our last meeting is the resurfacing of the tennis courts here at the municipal building. We have an estimate from, is it Ewers? How do you say their, Ewers? Ewers, sorry, for $17,500 to do a complete repair and resurfacing and painting of the lines again. The last time this extensive work was done was 2004. There has been some more minor crack repair and cleaning done by staff in the interim, but this, this needs to be done. Whenever we talk about these tennis courts, it always comes up about the pine trees along the southern edge. They provide welcome shade, but they also drop a lot of needles, which can be very frustrating for people coming to play. They also obstruct the sunshine from getting to the courts, which, so they don't dry quickly, which can create, because there's a bit of a mildew look there, but no one wants to take down mature trees. So, the committee went back and forth on this, it seemed like a lot of money, but at the time, I don't think we knew that it hadn't been done since 2004. So, in any event, we would like to, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 2016-33, authorizing a contract for the resurfacing of tennis courts at the municipal, municipal building. So moved.
Second? Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-33, authorizing a contract for the resurfacing of the tennis court. Are there any questions or comments? I mean, the one thing I will add is, it was requested that we bring it up in the Environmental Stewardship Committee with respect to the pine trees and whether there's something we can do to help the tennis courts and possibly look at this a little bit differently, so we are going to bring that up in the Environmental Stewardship Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-33. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. We'll now move on to the Land Development Committee, and the first item is ordinance 2016-13 with respect to the rezoning of the 2100 section road or the former Gibson property. First, I'd like to announce, or announce a public hearing with respect to this item, which we will have at our council meeting on September 12th. This is the, today is the first reading of this particular ordinance. It was referred to us, the item came to us, we referred it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed this at its meeting on August 1st and recommended the rezoning. So, we are having our first reading today with respect to this item, but I would first like to turn it over to the village manager because the owner of the property has made some decisions with respect to the property, which I think will be good news to our residents.
Thanks, Mayor. I did want to mention a couple of things about the Port, Port property, the former Gibson property. Staff does continue to work with the Port Authority as they transition to redevelop this 56-acre tract to a redevelopable site. You may recall, a few weeks ago, two public information meetings were held on, on July 20th. Those were coordinated by staff and invited the port to come in and make a presentation to residents who, who lived in the area. We actually sent out about 220 invitations to households and did not get a huge response from, from residents, but I think the meetings were very informal, or very informational in the sense letting adjacent property owners and others in the area know what kind of work was going to be transitioning over the next, next year. That included everything from the, from the demolition of the Gibson Building to the asbestos abatement within, within the Gibson Building, the restriction to, to work only on, to not work on certain Jewish holidays, stormwater improvements, as well as the timeframe for when all this redevelopment was going to occur. And as the mayor mentioned, one of the items that came up during that informational meeting was in regards to the stormwater work that was going to be done along El Brook. It actually runs along the property line just north of the Gibson Building and goes all the way to the north property line that butts up against Pepsi. And the port's initial plans were to create a channel along that, that area that would butt up to the property line, so it would certainly take out a significant number of, of trees. So, it would run parallel to El Brook, but it was on the, on the, the port's property. The port has certainly listened to the, to the residents. They have taken those types of comments into consideration, and we have worked out a, a tentative agreement where they will, they've redesigned that stormwater infrastructure to move it 20 feet away from the property line, so it will no longer butt up against the property line. So, therefore, a stormwater pipe will still travel in that same direction going, going from the south to the north, but it'll be 20 feet off of the, off the property line. So, this, and along with some other aspects of the project, will require some financial participation from the, from the village, but with the port, staff will be working with the Land Development Committee to bring a, an agreement to the, to the village and to finalize this. So, I think this is huge for the port, and I think it does demonstrate how the port is very receptive and interested in residents' concerns. Just to, you know, since you just set the public hearing on this property, I just want to mention a couple of things about that, that the, the rezoning on the, on the 17-acre residential piece of land along Section Road, it has been recommended by the, by the Planning Commission, and the next step will be here on, at next month, when we hold another public hearing. And there was a lot of discussion about this at the Planning Commission in regards to the 17 acres. Most folks did not know the property was zoned residential. Most people assumed that that was all part of the Gibson property and it was zoned industrial, but there's a 17-acre tract there that is primarily sloped, has a creek running through it, has a flood plain and a floodway, and then it's also encumbered by setbacks, so it's not a real developable site. But that particular property is, is zoned residential, and the request is to rezone it to industrial, and staff has recommended that, as has the Planning, Planning Commission. But one thing to keep in mind is that in our industrial zoning code, even though our, our zoning code is not the most up-to-date zoning code, one of the restrictions that it currently has is for that industrial area that only 50% of the area can be built upon. So, if you look at the 56-acre tract in total, about 28 acres is the, is the limitation there in regards to what can be built on. So, structures cannot be built unless there is a variance granted, which I would anticipate something like that is depending on what kind of end user, but the village will be in a much different position as opposed to our straight zoning that we're currently facing right now. So, 28 acres will not be built upon unless that variance is sought. So, the next step is the, is the zoning for the site. We will vacate, the council's being requested to vacate the streets, the paper streets on that property this evening, and so that's a, a process that we will complete in order for the site to be marketed as one entire tract of land, in, in its entirety of 56 acres. And overall, the, the, this is moving the village forward in terms of, from a, from a village standpoint and also from an economic development standpoint, to be able to, to advance this industrial area, because it is one of the only seven industrial areas that we have here in the village, so it is a critical piece of ground for the, for the village. And we certainly, the, the objective is to return the property to a, a higher and better use. And certainly, I think the port has agreed to, to participate with the village, and certainly infusing a significant amount of money into the property, about $13 million is being invested by the port into, into our community. So, their objective of revitalizing a complex piece of property that the private sector probably would not touch, and then combining that with trying to be respectful of our financial situation and making it a more vibrant property, certainly fits nicely into our economic development objectives as well. So, the port has agreed that they'll continue to communicate with us, and they've offered to communicate with the residents as well, so I think that is huge on our part, and I think they've done an excellent job so far in communicating that to, to us as well as to our residents. So, just wanted to make that announcement this evening. We'll be having further discussions about that, and also thank the port for making the decision to make that kind of investment here in the village.
I just want to clarify that by doing this different stormwater, that is going to leave a buffering area of plantings, trees, bushes, whatever, that are presently there, so that the residents along El Brook abiding that property have some shield between what the activity on the property and their own backyards.
That is correct. So, and it starts primarily at the, the northern end of the building and goes north, so it does hit about, anywhere between about 15 to 20 properties, so they will have 20 feet where nothing will be disturbed, and then the pipe will be installed west of that, and it will not be a channel on that side of it, so it will actually take up less room.
I drove down there last week because I, I didn't have a good visual, and you, I got a better appreciation of how close it all is to those backyards, so I think that is a very nice, I mean, I'm really grateful to them for that.
And, and, and...
And to you for pursuing it.
In addition, the, the trees that are between the building and the property, back properties are also not going to be disturbed. So, they're going to take down the building, but the trees that are, right now, there's a road that runs between the building and the property lines, and then there's a, you know, five to 10 feet of trees between the fence and the road, and those are not going to be disturbed by it.
So, I want to just reiterate, thank you for that. I think it's, it's definitely a very big deal that the port heard those, heard those messages and, and took them to heart, and, and this is, it's, it's very big, it was certainly, I was at the, the public sessions, and people were very concerned about that, and so it's, it's really a huge testament. We are very lucky to have them in, you know, involved with the, with the process, as, as you said, Scott, who may, may or may not have ever become anything and may simply have just deteriorated, and to have a partner who is very invested in getting this right. They are very, very, very concerned with this being the right project and the right, you know, working with neighbors and everything, so I think this is a huge, a huge testament. I did just want to say, I mean, I think the, the point that you just made about the 50% and what our zoning code says, I mean, certainly, we, we all, I probably should bone up on our, on our zoning code, but I think in light of the fact that we're going to have a, a public hearing and just hearing some of the confusion and misinformation and getting questions that I think are coming to us from neighbors kind of all over the place, I think it would be very helpful to, before our next, before the public hearing, to be able to have kind of a, almost like a cheat sheet on the industrial zoning. People are asking about, questions about setbacks and about, you know, that 50% thing is very interesting. And then also, what you, what you also just said, there were a lot of nuggets in what you just said, I wanted to follow up on, the fact that there may be a variance and some of the other carrots and sticks, I guess, that we may have along the way, whether it's, you know, tax abatements or things, that we, opportunities where we do have ability to, to negotiate with end users, or, you know, to work with the end user because we have points where we're going to, you know, where you'll be at the table with them. I think that would be helpful just to really understand. I think there was some confusion about that, there's been some misinformation about that, and I, I think that would be very helpful for us to get. And then also, I just want to sort of reiterate, having been to that, the public hearings, it's a good process, the more, the better, the more we can do that. I mean, whether it's Land Development Committee, but I think actually doing it with neighbors, with residents, making sure that their voices are heard, now hopefully, understanding that the port is listening with open ears. But I also think another, so as regularly as possible, as, as is reasonable, certainly, and with as much notice as possible, I think is good, and maybe even to a slightly broader audience than, than was invited to that first meeting. But the other thing that has been kind of a point of concern that we've heard is, okay, that's great, we love the port, but they're not the end user. So, maybe, maybe one other suggestion is maybe Ready could be invited, or, or somebody like that who is involved in that stage as well to, to help answer some of the questions as well. So, that's my, that was my list of, of things that I took away from attending those, those meetings, but I think generally, it's very good news, and the biggest takeaway is, I think that people are really, the village manager is listening, the mayor is listening, council members are driving down the street to look at, look at houses, we're all with open ears on this and want to make sure that this is, you know, that this gets done right. I think the port really took a big step on that today, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of the things that Councilman K. Man just shared. Just wanted to add a couple of things. At the, at the zoning meeting, there were, there was one other point that was brought up in terms of concern of residents. Actually, let me just preface that again by sharing what Miss K. Man just shared about how the Port Authority is listening and, and, and trying to be as cooperative as possible to the needs of the residents. There was one other item that was brought up in particular by Mrs. Krishner at the zoning meeting, that was also, that's also been shared by many residents... meeting that was also, that's also been shared by many residents in that part of the village and that is, you know, the need for pedestrian safety. Anticipating new industrial use of that property, we're going to have a lot more cars on Elbrook, probably on Elbrook Road entering, exiting, I'm sorry, on Section Road, entering and exiting at various times of the day. And so what she shared and what others have shared with me is the need to, again, consider pedestrian walkways or sidewalks that would border, that could border that property, certainly on Section Road. And when we're talking about a project of $13 million, if I remember, at pedestrian safety meeting from Councilperson Wolf several months ago, you know, we had an estimate for what walkways would cost along Elbrook Road, something of the order of $35,000 or something like that. So I assume the cost along Section Road would certainly, I would think, would not be more than that, likely less because I think the length of property is shorter, but I'm not sure. But certainly, given the budget of $13 million, if the port authority could also consider those types of needs that the residents are already expressing, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me just clarify, the port is merely the interim in terms of getting the site ready for development. So there will not be any discussion with them about putting in sidewalks. That kind of discussion is, will be held for the end user, whether it's putting in sidewalks or doing a TIF on the property that might generate some dollars for road improvements or tax incentive, something like that. So that's how that, the context of that will evolve like that.
Thank you.
The other thing I would add is because of what the port has agreed to do with respect to the stormwater work is we've always talked about the possibility of exiting out the back of the property, what, because of what the port has done and not, will not have a channel, but will pipe along the western edge of the property, that opportunity is now also available, which could also address some of the traffic and pedestrian issue. Okay, so tonight is the first reading of this particular rezoning ordinance. We will have the second reading at our September meeting and the public hearing. Okay, the next item with respect to the former Gibson property and the village manager mentioned this, is that there are currently three paper streets on the 56 acres of the property. Obviously, these paper streets came into existence even before the building was built. They are solely paper streets. They kind of lay out where streets could have been on the property if you hadn't had a building. But in order to maximize the development potential on that property, which translates into economic potential to the village, we are, the port has requested that we vacate those paper streets. And so before you this evening is ordinance 2016-14, which would in fact vacate those paper streets. So I would first like to make a motion, to waive, I think this is relatively straightforward, so I would first like to make a motion that we waive the three readings on this particular ordinance. So I hereby move that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2016-14.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2016-14 vacating the paper streets. Are there any questions or comments?
Just want to clarify one thing that we talked about in the meeting. It's, this is, even though they will, they'll have to refile, it's at no cost to us, they're, all the costs are being covered by the port, I suppose, or whoever's, yeah, by the port. So no cost, this is, no cost to us.
Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2016-14. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll just, we will not, we do not need this to be an emergency measure. It will just go into effect in the ordinary course of business 45 days following approval. And that concludes the land development committee report. I will now turn it over to the manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two items I wanted to mention. First is the installation of temporary speed humps on Sagmore Drive. This is part of the village's process to continue its efforts to bring awareness to safety on our roadways. These are temporary devices that will be removed when inclement weather begins, but we installed one and then we've installed a second one on Sagmore Drive to measure its effectiveness on, in the north end of the village. So just want to let residents know that those are in place. And the second item is just a thank you to Amy Rubenstein, who coordinates our ice cream social. She does an excellent job and then on top of that, our staff follows up with some of the heavier lifting and the staff just does a tremendous job in pulling off the ice cream social. Just, so just wanted to thank our staff for the excellent job that they do in conjunction with Amy planning our entire event. Thanks.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we will move on to the chief's report.
All right, tonight for the chief's report, I'd like to bring in Chief Wallace, Officer Andrea Alt, and then our newest member of the Amberly Village Police Department, her partner K-9 Creed. And we're going to have a badge ceremony and swearing in presentation here.
You going to come forward, Mayor? Okay, Officer Alt, I assume you will be assisting in Creed and staying the oath?
Yes.
Okay, please raise your right hand, right paw. I, Officer Alt and Creed
I, Officer Alt and Creed
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Amberly Village, Ohio
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Amberly Village, Ohio
And to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability
Will discharge the duties of the police K-9 officer
Will discharge the duties of the police K-9 officer
Congratulations. Congratulations, Creed. Thank you, Senator. [applause]
So Officer Alt and K-9 Creed will be on the streets this week, so I would be looking for them to be in the car and walking and being very public. So everybody keep an eye out for them on the streets this week. Thank you. That concludes the chief's report.
Okay, I'll just follow up on that and that'll be my mayor's report. The graduation ceremony was this past Friday for Creed and Officer Alt, as well as three other K-9 units. The city of Cincinnati got one new K-9 and Hamilton County got two. All of this has not been possible without tremendous assistance from both village businesses and organizations that have given grants to this, as well as, I mean, the one very large factor for K-9 units throughout Hamilton County is the Hever Camp Foundation. And the Hever Camp Foundation, in fact, provided the money for all four of the dogs for Hamilton County. And the other big, big benefit we got from this is that the four K-9s were purchased at the same time and normally, they were purchased from a kennel in Pennsylvania. And interestingly, the K-9s throughout the US, none of the K-9s are bred in the US anymore because our breeding process has bred out most of the aggressiveness that are needed in K-9 units. They actually are all brought in from Europe and this particular kennel in Pennsylvania had 75 dogs for the Hamilton County units to choose from. But normally, we would have had to do the training up there, but the city of Cincinnati hosted the training at their facility down at Spiny Field, which again, saved us a tremendous amount of money. So on that, the one thing I will tell council, on behalf of council, I will be sending thank yous to all of the organizations this week that have made this possible. And this, this again, I think is a, was, is a credit to the chief and lieutenant, is another case of our organization looking for tools that will make our already outstanding police force even better. And this, this again, is a tool that has been, that is being put into our toolbox to make our police force that much better and I just think it's an excellent step forward. There, the Hever Camp Foundation, interestingly, Officer Hever Camp was an officer in Gulf Manor and he died way too early, but he was an excellent K-9 officer and he again, had tremendous passion for K-9s. And I think after he passed away, Gulf Manor no longer has a K-9 unit. But again, this will be a K-9 unit that we can make available to other municipalities that are nearby, which we also used when there was a K-9 unit in Gulf Manor. We used their unit. So again, I just think this is a great example of police forces working together to deliver a better answer. So it's kudos to the chief, to the lieutenant and all of your leadership, as well as Officer Alt, who has, as I've seen firsthand, has tremendous passion for what she's doing and I'm sure she's going to be very good at what she's doing. So with that said, that concludes my mayor's report. Is there any new business?
So just ice cream social related. The dog, I think, stole the show yesterday, I thought ice cream social, but, so, and again, just to reiterate the thanks to Amy and to staff and to everybody, it was another wonderful ice cream social. I wanted to mention two quick things for, I think you'll be hearing more, there was a Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance had a table about solar at the ice cream social yesterday and for those who weren't there or didn't get a chance to sort of stay tuned, you'll be hearing more about opportunities to learn more about solar. I don't want to steal the thunder of those folks, but just, you know, there was some discussion at one of our earlier council meetings this summer around people who are getting interested in that from some public comment and we are, we're working on that. The mayor is working on that. So that's one thing. The other thing is if you didn't get enough ice cream, Pleasant Ridge Monastery is having their ice cream social next Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 and it's primarily Pleasant Ridge folks, but we, they have invited us as neighbors and certainly lots of Pleasant Ridge families but invited Amberly residents as well to attend that. And then on a, just one other note, I think we're ticking toward the, potentially, the filing deadline for Duke Energy for the pipeline. So for folks who are kind of, were taking the summer off but are thinking about writing letters to the Ohio Power Siting Board, just wanted to put in a plug to encourage, to encourage getting those letters in. I don't know if you have more to add on that.
Yeah, the, we had a table of information about the pipeline at the ice cream social and it was steady all evening. There were people engaging and most people, a lot of people had already written a letter. Almost everybody had heard something about it and knew about it, but a surprising number hadn't actually written letters yet. So we strongly encourage them to do that. Duke has until September 15th, I think it is, to file their application, 90 days from their last public information session. Who knows where it's going from there.
Just one other comment related to the Duke pipeline. I understand that the Siting Board has received more comments for this particular project than any project they've ever, than ever, than any project that they might review because they haven't received the application yet.
Any other new business or any other items? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.